I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, before we get started, I just want to tell, since we're out there in TV land, it's Sawyer's, my four-year-old, my youngest grandson's birthday today. Happy birthday, buddy. I'll see you in a little bit.
One, two, three, happy birthday Sawyer.
All right, okay.
One, two, three.
Happy birthday Sawyer!
Okay, thank you. Okay, we had the call of the House meeting to order in certified form. Walter is doing election duty, everybody else is here. We do have a consent agenda this evening. Treasurers report approval of minutes of October 18th at Putham, Missouri. If we have the treasurer's report, please.
Yes, sir. November 8, 2022, Treasurers report payable checks of amount of $117,791.96. There are five major vendor checks in that amount of payable checks representing 85% of the $117,000. And the major vendor checks are amount of $105,151.13. Payroll for October 28, 2022, to include Social Security and Medicare, $140,324.61. There are two monthly bond payments totaling $60,510.18. Grand total payable checks, payroll, and bond payments, $318,626.75.
Okay, get a motion to approve the consent agenda motion. Todd makes a motion, Linda seconds, clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, the first one, 3.1, is an ordinance appointing a director to the Board of Directors for Central Ozarks Utility and Service Alliance. Anita?
Did we approve payment of due?
Yeah. Did already, part of the consent agenda.
Mayor's term was up for co-USA.
No, this is for the board meeting we had this morning.
Central Ozarks.
Is it really? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
You're good. Co-USA, this is for reappointing the mayor. His term was up to the co-USA board.
Okay.
Mayor's chairman.
Before you read that as a bill, please.
I need the numbers.
Do you want to have the bill number?
It's just going to be the first one I can carry on.
I want, you need the ordinance number too?
Yes, so it starts with 22-120 and 3932. Okay, we can carry on.
Read it as a bill.
Bill number 22-120, an ordinance appointing a director to the Board of Directors for Central Ozarks Utility and Service Alliance.
Get a motion from Todd, second. Reggie, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Okay, second reading, please.
Bill number 22-120, an ordinance appointing a director to the Board of Directors for Central Ozarks Utility and Service Alliance.
Motion.
Charles makes a motion. Reggie, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles? Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
John?
Is it ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 3932, an ordinance appointing a director to the Board of Directors for Central Ozarks Utility and Service Alliance.
The motion on the reading, get the ordinance.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion. Michael, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John? Yes.
Okay, the next item is an ordinance authorizing purchase of used dumpsters, another permit from the estate of Ika May Ziganbine. This is basically the roll-on, roll-off truck. I don't see Ricky out there.
He's out there. He's out there.
He's got the yellow shirt on.
Has that camouflage hat on your boy? This is a roll-on, roll-off truck that's rigged mine used for years. I don't know what year it is, 2004 or '05.
I think it's a five. Five.
And then there's several more dumpsters, which we were looking to get some, and he still has some left.
Yeah.
It'd be a good deal, I think.
Ten roll-offs with it.
Ten roll-offs.
And then I think it comes with some other stuff.
Okay. Yeah, for the roll-on, roll-off truck, he gave the spare parts and stuff that he had to let know last. Okay, read that as a bill, please.
Bill number 22-121, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of used dumpsters and other equipment from the estate of Ika May Ziganbine.
Get a motion on the first reading. Todd makes a motion, Michael, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John? Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-121, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of used dumpsters and other equipment from the estate of Ika May Ziganbine.
Get a motion on the second reading. Linda makes a motion. Glenn, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Any ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 3933, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of used dumpsters and other equipment from the estate of Ika May Ziganbine.
Get a motion on the reading, get the ordinance. Linda makes a motion, Linda, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like we had the truck broke out from the dumpsters.
Is that the equipment here?
Okay, so 3.2, read this bill, please.
Yeah, we did that because it looks like there were two different sellers.
Oh, okay.
Because they... Bill number...
Just read it and focus.
Alrighty. Bill number 22-122, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2005 Freightliner roll-off truck from James R. Ziganbine.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion. Michael, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Charles, Ellen?
Yes.
Charles? Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bill number 22-122, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2005 Freightliner roll-off truck from James R. Ziganbine.
Get a motion on the second reading. Todd makes a motion. John, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Is it ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 3934, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2005 Freightliner roll-off truck from James R. Ziganbine.
Motion.
Motion by Charles, second. Reggie, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, 3.4 ordinance, accepting the renewal of insurance. Anita, you want to toss that?
This is for vision disability dental and life through MetLife. There was absolutely no change in benefits or our payment. It stayed the same.
Okay, read this bill, please.
Sorry about that. Bill number 22-123, an ordinance accepting the renewal of insurance with MetLife for 2023 life disability dental and vision insurance coverage.
Motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Reggie makes a motion, Linda, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-123, an ordinance accepting the renewal of insurance with MetLife for 2023 life disability dental and vision insurance coverage.
Get a motion on the second reading. Michael makes a motion. Glenn, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3935, an ordinance accepting the renewal of insurance with MetLife for 2023 life disability dental and vision insurance coverage.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Floyd makes a motion, Linda, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, the next one's the health insurance.
The health insurance went up 5%. It was $780,713.28. It went up $39,036.36 for a total of $819,749.64.
Okay, read this bill, please.
Bill number 22-124, an ordinance accepting the proposal of United Healthcare for 2023 health insurance and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for employee health insurance.
Get a motion on the first reading. Linda makes a motion. Todd, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-124, an ordinance accepting the proposal of United Healthcare for 2023 health insurance and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for employee health insurance.
Get a motion on the second reading. Todd makes a motion. John, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
An ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 3936, an ordinance accepting the proposal of United Healthcare for 2023 health insurance and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for employee health insurance.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion. Floyd, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Down to 3.6, Manning chart.
I had to make some changes to that to make it come out right.
Okay.
I met with the chief. It was really just about the two police, the patrolman positions.
You just couldn't call them police yet, and call them patrolmen.
Well, it was...
One had to be traffic and one had to be...
Well, we already had nine in the traffic subdepartment, so the chief wanted two in the patrol subdepartment.
Okay, good.
So that's what I changed. And I've got...
Go ahead.
She's ahead of you.
Not a very drastic change, but just in case you guys wanted to...
Have an accurate one?
That is the only real change that I made to it, as I just, because we already had nine in traffic. He wanted 19 together. Let me make sure that's right. Yep, that works.
We need to give one to pass it up to Anita because they need to have one to choose from.
This one's been fun. We'll get that Excel spreadsheet though, and it'll be better.
Read this bill.
Okay. Bill number 22-125, an ordinance amending city of St. Roberts Manning chart.
Get a motion. Charles makes a motion, second. Reggie, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 22-125, an ordinance amending city of St. Roberts Manning chart.
Get a motion on the second reading. Reggie makes a motion. Todd, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 3937, an ordinance amending city of St. Roberts Manning chart.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Reggie makes a motion. Glenn, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, 3.7, ordinance appointing an acting deputy city clerk, Cassandra. Our HR is filling in. Deputy, acting deputy city clerk. You can tell if I just call him.
You're not going to say your last name, mayor?
Pardon?
You're not going to say your last name? What is your...
Heinzness?
Heinzness.
Heinzman?
Heinzness?
Cassiness.
Cassy.
Heinz Smith?
Heinzness.
Heinzness.
Okay, read this bill.
So I did fill in the line there for Cassandra Heinzness on the ordinance.
She got it.
It's easy if you can see it. I think it makes... Bill number 22-126, an ordinance appointing an acting deputy city clerk of the city of St. Robert, Missouri.
Get a motion on the first reading. Linda makes a motion. Glenn, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
I know.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any second reading?
Bill number 22-126, an ordinance appointing an acting deputy city clerk of the city of St. Robert, Missouri.
Get a motion on the second reading. Michael makes a motion. Todd, second. Clarification, discussion, call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 3938, an ordinance appointing an acting deputy city clerk of the city of St. Robert, Missouri.
Motion.
Who was it down here? I figured it was...
Glenn?
Reggie? No, no, it was Reggie.
Linda, then Reggie. Got it? Call.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Is that the ordinance?
That was it.
I think that was the ordinance.
No, that's the first one.
That was the second one.
That was the ordinance. I think I read it three times.
Yeah.
I've got to make my little...
I thought it was the second one.
Did that lounge effect?
Did that lounge, yes.
Lounge effect.
Yeah.
That's why I knew that.
Okay, next committee meeting, wage finance.
We will need to have one for the new budget, but could we talk to Todd later when we see when we're going to get it done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Public Works, Steve?
We'll probably have to have one, I don't know the exact date yet.
Okay. Okay, emergency services? No.
No.
Okay, park committee?
They're having one in two weeks. We're getting ready for Christmas in the park.
Okay, comments by Alderman. Start down here with John.
I don't have any time.
Michael?
I have nothing.
Todd?
Calls are open till seven o'clock. Please, please, go out and vote. Vote, vote. Thank you.
Reggie? Linda?
Not right now.
Not right now.
I speak now or forever hold the peace, right? Text my friend around.
I want to thank our Public Works and our transfer station personnel. They've been doing a great job. They got overwhelmed on Monday and Tuesday, came back and got the leaves up, the breeze and everything. And I want to just tell the citizens that our workers that work for them are human beings. And when they pick up the trash, tell them thank you. That's all you have to do. It will make their day. They're going through situations just like we are. And at least we could say, hey, thank you for the hard work that you do. That's all I got to say.
Good comment. Okay, Glenn?
Yes.
Can I top that?
No, no, I'm not going to top it. Thank you. Well said.
What day is the yard debris pickup?
First and third Mondays.
First and third Mondays.
The yard debris? I thought I saw it as special pickup. On Facebook? Did you post something?
It was there because Charles posted it for Tuesday.
Wait, miss.
They picked it up Monday.
Right.
Oh.
Yeah, there was a delay on Monday. They couldn't get it.
So they went back on Tuesday and...
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay, city clerk finance, we don't have anything. Human resources, Cassandra, unless you've got a report?
Nope.
Nope. Mike, anything?
No.
No. Steve? Public Works?
Just a real quick update. On the 20th, we had a water main break. It was around 460 foot west of Chicago Street. And that was down around the gas company, somewhere in that area. Wasn't that bad. They got it fixed fairly quickly, but that's the only line that heads to that end of the town. So we had an issue, or not really an issue, but we did put a few people out of water for a little bit. The transformer went out at well seven and it had to be replaced, just kind of out of the blue. We've had a couple of them that we've had some same issues with, so...
That's our big tower, right?
It's, yeah, the new tower.
Yeah.
Yep, so we got that fixed the same day and replaced and that back up and running. We started cutting the road in over at the RV park, the road and...
What's green?
And the pad sites, so we're running in a little bit of a grading difference than what was there before. But I'll post a meeting with the engineers tomorrow and try to work that out. We started receiving a lot of the equipment for the treatment plant. Some of it were storing at Shasta inside the garage there. So like all the UV stuff come in and now we're waiting on some grit removal equipment. And we'll place it in there until the contractor gets ready to start using it. And we're finishing up on some of the, I guess, the piping and building of the lift station down there at the RV park. So hopefully this week I'll have almost all the site work done around the lift station. Then all we have to do is extend the lines off of that property. We don't know exactly what the route it's going to take yet, so we're kind of waiting on the engineer to figure that out. Yep, that's all I have.
Question, mayor?
Yes.
Willetts asphalt, what's the status on asphalt for the roads that are supposed to be repaired?
I called, talked to him, finally got ahold of him yesterday. He was going to come down and look over all the projects again. He never did give me a date. He said he could not give a date yet. He don't know how they're going to, how he's going to schedule them out yet, but as soon as I find out, I'll let you know.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Steve. Todd? I T.
Last Friday, I started a new program for the city. All city employees have been sent an email. We have a help desk ticketing system now. So any problems in the city, it's not a phone call, it's not an email, it's not a text. It's got to come through the help desk ticket system. That way I can keep track of it. Now, if it's an emergency situation, such as the cops in his patrol car and the computer's not working in there, that's an emergency situation. That's a different story. I will go down and fix that immediately. Otherwise, I need everything to be sent through the help desk ticket system so I can keep track of what I'm doing, when I need to buy parts. It's a very good program, and that's about it.
Okay, just send me one, even though I won't use it.
Huh?
Just send me one, or you know I won't use it?
Yep, you should have got one too.
Okay, good. Okay, Ricky, transfer station.
November 1st, we got the thumb put on the excavator finally. Thanksgiving, down at Waynesville has moved to Thursday route, moved to Wednesday, and there will be no recycling for Waynesville on that week. And then the tonnage report is 4,393 tons and average is 209. That's all I got.
You had the biggest day, 263, what, about eight ago?
Yeah, we had 240 Monday.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Did Waynesville get the debris picked up and leaves?
I don't know.
I think I was doing that.
I don't do that.
Okay, do they know about the recycle? Have they been notified?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smell?
A few things. There are two new statutes that hit the books in August that may impact us that we have to deal with. One of them is a, basically the Local Governmental Accountability Act, which I'm not sure it's mandatory, but it certainly looks like it's close to. And maybe they've established a portal and what they want is all of the city's expenditures for the year on that affordable, available...
I read it. I thought we had an option that we could either do that or...
There's an option, but to force it, but I want to read the actual statute.
Okay.
Because the option seems to be on the portal, not in having the expenditures, so I've gotta read the statute. I hadn't, was not aware of that statute till Anita sent it to me this afternoon, well, she had told me about it before. The other statute is, is more puzzling, I got a call today from motel owners. Um, the, our legislature passed a ru- a, a new statute that says that sales tax on utilities paid by their customers is recoverable by them now retroactively. So, it gets pretty complicated, 'cause I, first of all, I think that's unconstitutional, but, uh, we've got to pay close attention to that, because we've got a lot of motels. And what they're saying is if it's electricity, gas, water, or sewer, if that was charged to his room in some form or fashion. And we're not sure it's a direct charge or indirect charge yet, but that sales tax that was paid by, on that money, uh, in form or fashion by a motel, is now recoverable from the city back retroactively, and it looks to me like up to ten years. So it's just nuts, it's in response to Supreme Court case on taxes, so I've gotta get into this with both feet, because it may have some financial background. So, I, I want you to be aware, first of all, a retroactive collection of back taxes from the local government, I think is unconstitutional, but it's just went into effect. Uh, very powerful lobby.
I don't think we charge individual rooms, we, we build the whole hotel.
I understand that, but I, we've got to make sure that it's not gonna hit us, oh, I, I just don't know what's out there. It's just one of those that could sneak up and all of a sudden, so we'd be prepared.
Okay.
We had a little incident with a trash truck nicked a house, out of state, uh, person, so instead of bringing it to you, it was only a small injury, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, which is in our deductible, so I did a little settlement agreement, sent it to Anita, we'll send it with a check and get the settlement back, nothing to bother you at that level. Okay? Um, Alpine House, uh, the, uh, the appointment of the receiver is in process. Um, we can use our whole building code now for that process. Jeremy sent me about violations about a half inch thick, so we'll have that on the road to deal with the Alpine House here in the next few days. Um, Cozy Arts, after your, uh, discussion with me, the mayor wanted me to look at that. The problem that I always had is that the Cozy Arts real estate stands out behind it for five and a half acres. And I was worried about that dump behind, uh, the, the welding shop. There's a, so that we didn't wanna be involved with now. Um, I talked to Judy Miller, who's a real estate agent. The mayor and, and we, I prepared a little agreement and there, and the on- the now owners are in agreement for the city to come in and board up that front and, and get it all boarded up. The mayor wants to do that. Secondly, I got an overhead of the area and I believe that we can break off a little bit there in the back and we can do the, the Cozy Arts situation. I believe the owners are in agreement for us to tear it down and impose the, the tax lien, so I think we can do it by agreement without having to go through all the legal process. So, those two are well down the track down, I, I look good for those two, okay? And we'll, we'll keep on them, that's all I, that's all I've got.
You got Anita?
I got a question, thanks. Uh, one of the citizens, uh, asked if we were getting bedding tax from the, uh, from the hotels.
On what, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
One of the citizens asked if we were getting bedding tax from the re- from the hotels. I know we get some type of.
Getting what?
Bedding tax.
I can't hear what they're asking.
B E D D I N G.
Bedding tax.
And what, what is that?
That's a tax that they have to pay, you, you have to pay the local, uh, uh, government for people that are staying.
I have no idea who would ask you that, because the first thing is that the major most house tax is, goes to the tourism people, not us, the major thing. I think we have a small tax, uh, like we do have sales tax on most, I'm not.
Yeah, the personal property tax was waived when they did the part, the sales tax.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we don't have any additional taxes on the hotels.
From hotels at all?
Yeah, the personal property in there is not taxed.
There, there was a vote at a sales tax on hotels, but it all goes to tourism.
Okay, thanks.
I've never heard of a bedding tax, but.
Yeah, it's like a personal property.
Uh, well, property tax, we have that on there, of course.
During that ten years I was gone, they passed a.
In Florida, they give a, a bedding tax in Florida, in the state of Florida.
Where, I don't believe anybody pays a local sales tax to the city.
They used to pay for personal property.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, t- if you're staying there, when their, their, that their bill includes a sales tax, I do not believe that's the case.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but I don't think so.
Uh, just a few things, Mayor, I've been working with SEMA Bema to get an extension on the treatment plant, we asked for another year. Our financing, our gap financing is through Mid-America Bank or Missouri. And it runs out in December, so I contacted them the first of last week to see if we could, uh, do an extension for two years without early payoff penalty. And she told me yes, so they're working on getting that together for us and, uh, I wanted a few things in writing on it. Uh, I did talk to Jim Klad, like I said, he's on vacation, I did talk to the director of SEMA over our project and he hasn't heard anything, so we're still waiting on that. Tomorrow, they're supposed to bring us and one of our new neon signs they're proposing with the write-up on it. And it'll be the life size, uh, sign, um, with the neon in it and we'll be able to plug it in and it'll be the size that they're proposing to us. So, I'm kinda excited to see that, we've been waiting on that. Uh, AUSA met and went over the annual meeting, they had Johnny Morris received, uh, the highest award, so we have plenty of pictures to look at. Committee of fifty met and, uh, they honored Marcus Destin from Mesco and, uh, he was a really nice young man. We, uh, Holiday in the Park is the first Sunday, we're looking for volunteers and vendors, uh, you can call Mark at the park, uh, four or five one.
Two six two five.
Two six two five, uh, to sign up, I believe, how many do you have so far, Mark?
Um, we have thirty-nine tables, thirty-six tables available, and I'm gonna say we're about a third of the way there with vendors, some have one table, some have two, so. We're just now starting to come in a little bit more frequently.
I'd say the closer we get. Um, the new, uh, fitness center is open, they contacted us and brought us some flyers down, it's fifty dollars a month, uh, we visited with them. The, uh, we had a meeting today on the platner, uh, product, uh, C I D, um, Linda Daniels took Edna's place on that, um, board. We looked at, I think we've got thirty-eight thousand we've collected for the last.
If I remember the boundaries of that, the gas station that they just opened up, it used to be a gas station, is part of that tip?
It is.
Right across the street from Eagle Stock.
Do they collect the tax?
Yes.
They know?
Yes. We've checked on that a few years ago.
Well, it just opened.
It's a new business in there.
Oh, I was talking about the one on the corner.
Yeah.
No, this is the one across the street, next to the Texaco.
Yeah, I'll check for sure.
Old Texaco station? No, that's the one next to it, yeah, it used to be a hair thing.
The Growth Alliance meets next Wednesday at nine o'clock, if anyone would like to come, we were gonna have a speaker from the state, but, uh, they called me today and had to cancel. The small business grant, uh, comes out for up to fifty employees under the COVID, so they got the application done and it comes out the day after the Growth Alliance meeting. So they wanted to be in their office and get ready, get everything, uh, set up, it's a first come, first basis and you can go online. Uh, Missouri Department of Economic Development, if you have a small business and wanna see if you qualify for any, uh, refunds from them on that. Um, I think that's about it, Mayor.
Mayor, I had one other thing. Uh, the, uh, DNR and, uh, we have a contract that, uh, with DNR to extend, uh, any kind of penalties or violations based upon the building of the new plant. Uh, and I've had, uh, a couple of conferences and email exchanges with Jeff, because he's been doing the contract. And, uh, because the old plant is hanging by, you know, a shoestring, uh, my problem was if we got another flood or something that blew that old plant out and we're pour- and it's causing problems, we could get fined or penalties in there that would be very excessive. So, I want to include that language that the little wave in case of the flood or the old plant failing. And, uh, we, we played back, but they sent me, Jeff sent me back the language and wants me to put in my language today on the fines and stuff, so I can get it to DNR. I'll be doing that tomorrow, but we wanna make sure that we protect ourselves against DNR penalties if the old plant has a problem.
I do know something real quick, uh, well, the dog park, a lot of people are asking about the dog park, I think we need to address it and tell people, so people will know what's going on and when we might be able to open, put it out there.
Well, I think we'll be able to open, we hope, the end of November, we had to order some signage about, um, the pup, the dogs have to be vaccinated and they have to be six months or over before they can be in the dog park.
Thank you.
We got our protocols from, uh, Fort Leonard with the elders and I contacted a couple of the vets.
I had somebody stop me today and ask about it, and I know Anita said she's had people call her from Waynesville, so, just so people know what, when it might be open.
Okay, Mark and I don't know if Anita was in the meeting, they told me, they talked to you, 'cause I referred him to you about the Little League, there's a Little League, something other than they want our, uh, community center, baseball, dining, what, you know? Where, where are we at on that, what is going on with that?
The season that they had here in the fall is over, um, Thursday night, they're going to use our field to make it one B, and I think that'll be the end of the season for that.
Okay.
Um, last time I talked to him, he had some ideas that he was going to discuss, you know, um, but he's wanting to continue using the Saint Robert baseball field for Little League. We also have youth sports coming online January one. So, I just told him, I said, you know, if we can work something out, that'd be fine, but Waynesville Saint Robert Youth Sports has to press those. And I have no idea what the season schedule will look like at this time, so I could not promise him anything at that time.
Mayor, if I may, real quick.
Yeah.
I just wanna backtrack if I, on the dog park thing, you said you have some, some signage coming in to remind folks of vaccinations and to do the right thing with their dogs, correct?
Right.
So my million dollar question is, is who's gonna monitor to make sure those folks have those particular shot records on file? Like rabies shots and.
We could, um, hear that.
Right.
We're putting the signage up and.
So the signage basically protects us from somebody getting bit if their dog doesn't have a rabies shot, is that kinda what we're saying?
Right, I talked to the insurance company, it's not as much.
Nobody knew anything about that?
Sure.
And we got reported, where somebody reported that they had a puppy in there that had parvovir.
Right.
And when we, Anita checked into it, found out that it stays in the ground for seven years.
Oh, okay.
So, it's been contaminated or.
Right.
Whatever you wanna call it, and, uh, we've done the three flushing of the soil and all that, and then we'll let it dry and let the sun have it without any other dogs in there. And then the requirement, uh, that people have is what she's talking about, that they have, you know, all we can do is warn them.
Right, but it does protect us in case they bring a dog in there that doesn't have rabies?
Signage is.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Okay, Mr. Wallace, have you interviewed your students?
I'm here tonight, so I've got students from Waynesville High School and Crocker High School, and it's Riley, Colin, Ava, and Sam, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Did you guys have something, did you come for?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Oh, you wanna talk?
Yeah, I wanna talk, yes, yes, I didn't, I didn't come to watch the show without talking, right? I, I, I'm here tonight, I'm Josh Devers with Citizens Bank of the Midwest, respectfully inquiring the board and the mayor to see when the last time banking services were put out for bid.
We don't have.
I understand that, and, and.
You've got no intention to do it.
You have no intention of doing it? Uh, may I ask why?
Uh, I've had phone calls, I'm trying to think of his name, from Citizens Bank, uh, and, uh, we're not very nice phone calls, because you called me all kinds of names and stuff, but anyway.
I, I, I highly doubt that, but I just, uh, I think is, you know, as a board, the, the fiduciary responsibility for your, your citizens of this Saint Robert, so.
Years, uh, it's been the parish county bank for all that time and we have no record to move up.
Well, I understand, but it, as a fiduciary responsibility for the, the taxpayers and for the citizens of Saint Robert, it could be costing the city thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, based upon. Uh, how do you know, if you're not putting it out there for bid, how do you know? So I would, again, inquire with the board about when the last time the banking services were put out for bid, and maybe.
Most everything we get is taken care of, so. Okay, we appreciate you.
Alrighty.
Uh, we, we support you, we've got some, uh, stuff that we have through you guys, and every back in town's got some of the, the, the actual city payroll and, you know, checking accounts, you know, so.
Again, I would respectfully request for the banking services to be bid to make sure the citizens are being taken care of, so.
Don't worry about it, yeah, yeah, it's all covered, we get great audits every year, appreciate you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor. Yeah.
What was that? For Ty- uh, Tyce?
Okay.
Uh, Tyce?
Bank accounts, bank accounts.
Tyce? Were you finished with the D N, D R N, D N R, uh, information, because it seemed like you got cut off on.
Are you finished with your, talking about the contract with DNR, do you have anything else?
Yeah, no, I'm done. I just wanted, the DNR thing is real ra- rampant, thank you. I'm sorry, I bought, I bought, I got some court stuff the other day that worked beautifully with my hearing, I just ordered one like for the court, I should be able to not have to get translated.
Bring that suitcase you used to come here and plug in.
I'll actually be able to hear and correct you now.
Shots fired.
Uh, the next round of board of all of them, the meeting will be November twenty-second, let's do that, just before Thanksgiving. At five P M, the meeting is being closed, pursuant to Missouri law, chapter six, ten, that shall be one, includes section one legal, section two real estate, section three, uh, personnel. And votes to go into closed section. Linda makes a motion, Charles second, platification, discussion, call.
Twenty-second.
Glenn?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
We almost made it, Todd.